Good morning. I'd like to call to order this meeting in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, October 2nd. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present here in the Nat U Hill Room. We'll begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Giffens, please.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great. Thank you so much. We will move on now to department updates. First, we have the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just a few updates. Emergency room visits for COVID-like illnesses have decreased, but wastewater concentrations have still increased as of September 24th. The FDA has approved the first at-home flu vaccine in the U.S. called FluMist. This allows individuals or caregivers to administer the vaccine as a nasal spray. It is approved for those between the ages of 2 and 49, but must be administered by someone 18 or older. So individuals can go online to fill out a questionnaire. This will be reviewed by a pharmacist to determine if they're eligible, and those approved will have the vaccine delivered to them. As always, we have flu and COVID vaccines available through the Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive, and you can call 812-349-2829 for more information.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I don't either. Thank you so much for the update. We also have probably some folks online who wish to offer an update. I'll start, since we're kind of organizing things with teams, I'll start with Mr. Cockrell, the update on the land.
Well, I think I have two updates unless Brent from the airport is here, Mr. Thompson. But I'll start with a different update in case he's here. He could raise his hand. Received word from our Vet Environmental about the Vernal Pike site. There are a couple, they want to do a wetlands report, and that has to be completed by November because the foliage has to be there in order for them to do their waterways and wetlands report. So I'm planning on getting a quote for that, and once I get that, I might ask for it to be expedited through the Commissioners Administrator, and I'll talk about that with the agenda item we have later on in the meeting. So that's one. And is Brent, it looks like he is here, so he can handle the airport update, if my vision is correct.
Do we have someone here from the airport?
Good morning.
Yes.
Good morning. I'm Brett Thompson, Assistant Director at the Airport. Just a quick update. Cook FBO here at the airport is collecting donations for aid relief for the folks in North Carolina-Tennessee area. They're doing it seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and the items that they're requesting are things that easily fit into small airplanes. So these will be volunteer pilots who are flying down there to deliver relief. They're looking for things like canned pet food, baby formula needs, diapers, stuff like that, toilet paper, trash bags, essentials that people would need after a disaster, tarps, and small food items, canned food items, perishables that would travel well. So things that do not need a can opener. They were specific about that.
Can they get our screen working?
Yeah. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. So the collections go through what day? Is it just this week, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
Correct. Right now, it's just this week, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., until we get a further update with if more aid is still needed or not.
Okay. Drop off at the airport?
At Cook FBO, which is 970 South Kirby Road.
970 South Curry.
Kirby.
A-I-R-B-Y, right? Yes. I was like, that's not right. Okay. We've got a few audio problems here, so we're sort of translating and transliterating as we go here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's a great thing. We appreciate it and thank the pilots and the airport for us. It's a really good thing. Great. Okay. Do we have, oh, yes, we do. Justin Baker from Emergency Management.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. The Emergency Management Department received two grants from the Duke Energy Foundation recently. One was last year, and the other one was earlier this spring. And those grants went towards purchasing several certified letter radios for the county. The radios are available to Monroe County citizens and businesses at no cost. If anyone is interested in a radio, they can contact the Emergency Management Office at 812-349-2546, or email Eager Jamie or I. And here's what the letter radios come with.
Thank you. Exciting. I saw that there was 137 radios purchased with this particular round, is that right?
Yes.
Any comments, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate you sharing that information.
I appreciate, too, the fact they went after this grant.
Yeah. It's really useful. Really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does any other department have an update for us today?
Can I give an update to my update? While the other updates were going, I got the email from Vet Environmental for the proposed price for that wetlands and jurisdictional waters delineation, and that's the thing that needs to be done by November, or it'll have to wait till March.
Okay.
And the cost of that is $7,464.48. We'll have to get a contract and all that, but I think when we talk about the other item, I'm going to ask that that be considered an emergency item so that we can utilize the new code for that.
What was the amount again? All right. Thank you so much. All right. Anyone else have an update to their update? All right. Okay. Next, we have public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. We ask each speaker to limit their time to three minutes per person. Give us your name and your county of residence, please. We have somebody on Teams with the initial C-E.
Good morning, Commissioners. How's the technology working for you today? This is Christopher M. G. from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I regret not being there at the Nat U Hill Room. I was yesterday at the 29th public meeting of the CIB, which is just the amazement of the progress we've seen in this entity that you created. And I just want to give you a hats off on that. We've seen great progress, and especially with the Schmidt and Associates design yesterday, they provided an excellent 20-minute presentation and how they've sort of taken in the input from the community to build something that is very Monroe County. This was also a joint meeting with other elected officials, and I thought that was an excellent way to sort of get us on the same page. Going to these government meetings, I sort of see each entity can kind of get in their own sort of narrow vision of what's going on. But when you come together as a collective, I think we have that shared vision of what Monroe County is looking like, and I'd like to see more of those. Mayor Thompson mentioned this, and I think this is an excellent way to have these on occasion to get us on the same page. We have excellent elected officials, and to get them in the same room together on occasion, I think only creates positive energy. Quick plug, the Chamber of Commerce is doing its Elect Connect that we do twice a year during election years. This will be Wednesday, the 9th, at Waldron Arts Center. We'll be teaming up with the BEDC for this event. It's going to be at 3 o'clock. The doors open 3:30 the program starts, and we'll be just narrowly focused on the District 62 race and the Commissioners District 3 race. Should be some good sparks flowing. We'll be taking questions from the audience, but we'd love to see the Commissioners and the public there. It is open to the public. This is a community event. There'll be hors d'oeuvres there, cash bar, all the chamber amenities you come to know and expect. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have public comment they wish to offer for items that are not on the agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, please.
Yes. Move approval of the minutes from September 25th, 2024.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
There was one small issue, and Ms. Anita has already taken care of it.
Great. All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes for September 25th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item.
Move approval of the Claims Docket, Accounts Payable, October 2nd, 2024, and Payroll, October the 4th, 2024.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Gregory, our auditor, please tell us all about it.
Will do. Good morning, Commissioners. The Accounts Payable Claims Docket for today, October 2nd, 2024, totals $2,805,139.97. This total includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for October 4th totals $2,188,042.15. That includes the indirect and direct costs.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
It's really helpful at times to be reminded about what all we're doing, seeing the rural housing repair things that have come through, seeing the payment for the radios, the weather radios for people. Yeah. Reminds me of all the work that everybody in the county does.
Oh, yeah. It's impressive. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Claims Docket, Accounts Payable, October 2nd, 2024, and Payroll, October 4th, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. We did not receive any reports this week, so we'll move on to new business.
Move approval for the public hearing for Ordinance 2024-44, vacation portions of roadways in the Highland Park subdivision near Steinsville.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is an ordinance that would vacate 3rd and 4th Street and parts of William Street, Acuff Street, Gary Street, Carnegie Street, and Bessemer Street, and these, and those are the parts that lie between 3rd and 4th Street. I think if you look at the map, it shows kind of the block that, the blocks that we're talking about. These, this is all part of Highland Park subdivision, and it's near Steinsville. It's not in Steinsville. And so in accordance with the state code, we have to have a public hearing to determine whether these are appropriate. It is my understanding that the, all these properties are owned by one person and that this does not, would not affect any other, any other property's use, so that it doesn't connect another property to the rest of the road system. But we'll have a public, but we should open a public hearing and let the...
All right. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 2024-44. Do my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Cockrell? Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Giffens?
I don't have a question, but when I was reading through this handwritten notes that came with this, indicated that this area originally was surveyed and plotted by Buzzkirk and Buzzkirk. So the Buzzkirk family is really involved, and that was first done back in 1908.
My question is about access to other streets. Now, clearly, if these streets are taken out of the county inventory, that's not going to impact somebody else accessing these roadways to get to 2nd Street or 1st Street or something else.
That is my understanding.
Okay. All right. With the public hearing open, let's see if anyone has any comments. You may come to the podium in Nat U Hill, or raise your hand in Teams. Please give us your name and county of residence, sir.
My name is Ed Bittner. I'm the one that's actually asking for this vacation. So if there's any questions that needs to be answered, I can do that for you. As far as your question about roadways affecting anybody else, we own all the property that's there. There's a 25-acre farm just south of that that is adjacent to these four parcels. When we first bought the farm and the four parcels, the county assessor told us, or her, not told us, advised us not to connect them all together, which we was going to do back then, 17 years ago. But at that time, the taxes on them was assessed at $300 apiece for each of those four plots. This year, we got a letter saying it has increased, actually it increased that very year. We bought the parcels in January, and the assessment went up from $300 per those, for each of those lots, to $40,000 to each of those lots. We appealed it, and after I had an appraisal done and found out there was no way back into that property, except through our field, the assessment, the appraisal, come back at $1,000 apiece. Well, over the course of a few years, up to current date, they were brought up to $4,000 for each parcel. And it's still doable. But then this year, I got a letter saying they're going to assess them at $50,000 apiece. Now, you throw that in along with the, they're trying to bring a fire district out there at the same time. Now, you throw all five parcels, the farm plus those four parcels in there, my taxes are going to raise almost $3,000. I already pay $4,000 in taxes already. So the only option we had was to take those roads out and have them combined as one piece of land for taxing purposes, and that way I won't lose those properties. That's the whole, that's one of the whole reasons, something that the duty had talked to me about 17 years ago about not doing, in case we ever wanted to sell those properties or build a house on them. Our kids, aren't interested in living out there. Once they move out, they're gone. They don't, that's too far out for them. I mean, come on, it's like five minutes from the town of Ellisville. But they said it's too far out. It's way out in the country. We want somewhere in town, so we're never going to build on those properties. So now is the time to go ahead and just do it and have it done. But like I said, to answer your question, we own all those properties. We, and we didn't ask for any north-south roadways to be vacated from the, from Tabor Hill Road in, because if, for instance, our driveway, something, a big sinkhole would open up or whatever, and we have to move it, we want those north-south fairways to be open so we can put a new driveway in. So there was like five fairways coming off of Tabor Hill Road coming in, but we couldn't care less about the east-west ones. I don't think anybody else would either. Obviously, they don't. They're not here. So they all got letters, so.
Great. Let's see if my colleagues have any questions. Commissioner Giffens?
Thank you for explaining things.
It helps to have the explanation. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, that was a good explanation. Thank you.
Yeah. And so you're going through a type E subdivision, sorry, a type E revision to the property lines with planning?
Sure. I don't know what that is.
You want to talk to planning next? I'll leave it at that.
That's who, that's who sent me this direction.
Okay, so they may have already done that.
Oh, yeah. They're waiting on this to pass.
It's all administrative, so we wouldn't see it at a public meeting, so. Okay.
Yeah, they're waiting on this so they can close the roads. They don't want to have to, have to worry about it, so.
Got it.
But there is a neat story, if you guys ever want to look it up, or I can tell you now about how that, how that division was made back in 1908.
Yeah, please.
I researched it all to find out when I bought the property. I want, because I like knowing where properties come from. There was a couple, a man and his wife, that lived in that 16-plot area that's plotted off right now. And they had 15 kids back in 1908. I don't, obviously, they had no control back then. But they, they wanted to give each, each of their kids a piece of the pie. So they platted off 16 one-acre flats, one for them and one for each of the 15 kids. Over the course of the years, none of those kids ever moved into those 15 flats. And so now, like, I own four of them. Other neighbors own one or two of them. There's only like six houses in that whole 16-plant housing addition. But not one of the kids that ever moved into that. They all sold off.
Interesting. Thank you for the story.
Maybe they thought there was something in the water.
Let's see if there's anyone else who wants to speak through the public hearing section of this petition. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for Ordinance 2024-44. Thank you, Mr. Bittner. Any other comments or questions for my colleagues? Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Giffens? Okay. All right. With that, I'm going to call for a vote on Ordinance 2024-44. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of Resolution 2024-32, surplus property for highway and emergency management.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Gregory?
Yes, I'm back. This is one of those routine items, just to help us adhere to our internal policy. So I'm just requesting that you formally retire these items that are no longer being utilized by the county. There's a highway truck, and then two emergency management items.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah. Does the highway truck no longer have any value?
According to the experts, which is the Highway Department, Ms. Ridge's staff, it is very low value.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
I know those trucks are very expensive, and I didn't know if there's some other entity that might...
So this was actually a VAC truck, and we actually traded this in when we bought the new VAC truck, and it was never surplus at that time.
Okay.
So it's been a couple of years that we have not had it. We just, that step was overlooked, the paperwork part, when we traded it in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
When I saw the price of the new one, it's $485,000, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on Resolution 2024-32. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-32 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move ratification of Runaway and Homeless Youth Program Grant. Fund number, Runaway Homeless Youth. Fund number, 8120, in an amount of $182,000, $182,092. Sorry.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Vicki Tevino, Executive Director, Youth Services Bureau. This is Vanessa Schmidt. She's the Deputy Director. This is a grant we have been lucky enough to receive many times. It's a three-year grant, but each year for the three years, you have to ask for the $182,000-plus dollars. We're asking you to ratify the three-year grant. This is used for 80% of a counselor position, a full-time safe place person, supplies to educate and let the public know that safe place is something that youth can access by themselves if they don't feel safe in their situation. If you have any questions, let us know. I want to note that Vanessa wrote this grant and should get all the credit. I'm very proud of the work that she's done.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
When I was reading through that, it was just page after page after page to have to get through, so kudos to you for sorting all that out. It's a lot.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thanks for writing the grant. It certainly is for a very valuable program.
And I would say that luck has nothing to do with it. I think there's a lot of skill involved. You, your staff, amazing work. You know, if you, if you don't spend the money appropriately the first time, you don't get the second grant. So a big thank you to all of you for all you do, and please pass that along to everyone at the Youth Service Bureau. Appreciate it. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of ratifying the Runaway and Homeless Youth Program Grant, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right. Next item, please.
Yes. Move approval of Paragon LLC Event Planning Services Agreement. Fund name, donations, and SUDAC. Fund number, 4112, in an amount not to exceed $9,000.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Oh, look, Ms. Turner King is right on time to present.
Slide's right in there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this contract is to, it's for the event planner who did a lot of work with the summit for, that was sponsored by SUDAC, and the summit happened on September 5th. So it's pretty much a straightforward contract, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And I believe that Councilmember Iverson is online, so I don't know if he has anything to add. And Ms. Sill, who was the event planner, might also be online.
Let's see if there's any questions here first. Commissioner Jones?
No, I'm just, don't contracts like this usually come to us before the event?
Yes.
That's a good answer.
All right. Thank you.
That is the procedure, but...
Commissioner Giffens?
The event went off quite well, I will say, and it's been very amazing speakers, and especially, I want to thank the people in recovery who came and spoke at the event. It was full. Hopefully, in two years, this, we'll have another summit.
An event planner contract before?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we had a kind of a postmortem yesterday, the group that did the planning, and decided that really the planning needs to start about a full year in advance.
I would imagine that's true. Yeah. All right. Well, I don't see any hands raised, so let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Paragon LLC Event Planning Services Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of NDOT Change Order Number 3 for Fullerton Pike, Phase 3. Fund name, Fullerton Pike, Phase 3. Fund number, 8169, in a total amount of $139,968. And I would like to note that Monroe County is only responsible for 20% of that, which would be $26,193.60.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The total amount is $130,000, $130,968. Yes, sorry. No, you're good. I just want to make sure that's, that's clear. All right. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
So basically, when they were doing, they drilled shafts for the pier foundations. There were some voids that required some extra concrete to be planted. there were some voids that required some extra concrete to be poured for stabilization. We had the geotech engineers take a look, and this was the best remedy for that. So this was the purpose of the change order.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Oh, I find this, all this fascinating, what has to happen.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Thank you for staying on track on this one. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U-Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving N.D. change order number three for Fullerton Pike, Phase Three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance 2024-45 to amend the Monroe County Code, Chapter 266, purchase of goods and services.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Cox?
Yes, and I'm going to start off by there, when this was published, we had, we hadn't received all the feedback from, from the orders office yet, so I'm going to just kind of walk you through a couple of basic changes that, that we, that we made after that and the reasoning why. Pretty much, it involves 266-5C, and this is where the changes were made, dealing with allowing the commissioner administrator to be able to approve contracts or services under $5,000 or in the event of emergency. Feedback from the orders office, which I think is correct, makes it seem like they couldn't have the alternative of just bringing it straight to a commissioners' meeting as well, which is not the intent of this change. And so we had changed that to essentially say, any contract for services must be reduced in writing and approved by the Board of Commissioners during a public meeting prior to working before, and then add, and then, so that would be the change to the section, and then, but keeping, and any, any contract of service where the estimated cost is under $5,000 or an emergency exists, must be approved by the administrator and then presented to the Board of Commissioners at a meeting for informational purposes. So it would still come to the Board of Commissioners so that you, and I envision it kind of like the, the Treasurers Report or the Ways and Measures Report, it would be presented at the Board of Commissioners in kind of that kind of format. So that's kind of the, the change that we had there and.
Okay, and so, while you're there, and so that's not for ratification, that's just a report?
That's just for presentation.
Got it, thank you.
Right? It's not for ratification, it's for informational purposes. You should be aware of what's going on. And if someone goes, either wants to go to this meeting because they, they think it's important that the word gets out and things like that, and they want to make a presentation to you, they still can. Or I suppose if the county administrator says, "I'm not comfortable with this contract," it has to go to the Board of Commissioners, that, that avenue is still there. The other change involved, and this is not a change, but this, there was a typo in this code to begin with, where we had purchases of less than $50,000. We've already talked about how we can, are doing services, and so in that code section, it has says, "A purchasing agent may purchase supplies or services on the open market." The, the services are handled in a different portion of the code. It was causing confusion, and I think it was going to lead to some audit concerns because we had that two different ways in there. And then I think third, the, the other change, and this is 266-7, it was pointed out to me by my staff earlier today, that it should be entitled "Purchases between $50,000 and $150,000," should be the title of that. So those are kind of the changes we're asking you to, to review today. And as far as the other item that I talked about earlier today, I, I got news that they won't be out there until the 18th and the 21st, so we can just do it at the regular session next week and not worry about it.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Githens?
Yep.
So there's that one change from what's published in 266-7, purchases between $50,000 and $150,000 is the title. Okay. All right, is there any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U-Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance 2024-45 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. And we have an item that Ms. Purdy raised about the alley. Do you have information on it?
I've got some, yes. Like to, a move that we approve the contract with HFI for the vault lid replacement. This is in the alley next to the Stride Center. This will be fund name.
Cube Cap.
Cube Cap. Sorry.
Mom's Cap.
Mom's Cap.
Fun, fun number, 1138, in an amount of $9,590. And she has supplied an email to us about this.
We have a motion. It's got Mom's Cap.
If anybody's received any of my texts, you know why this is causing problems.
I know.
I clearly don't spell very well. Or it's actually the autocorrect. But anyway, thank you for adding this. Richard's been out sick all week, and this has been something he's been waiting on, and he received that, this last night.
It's from HFI. It's to remove an existing vault lid, and this, this is, my understanding is, it's located between Fiscus and our county, our parking garage. And the vault is in the ground, and it is, provides for the backflow services, and it was actually installed when the garage was built. And those backflow is a plumbing issue, because I wasn't sure. And so this, this area, this plumbing section, is used for fire protection and also the live wall that we have on the garage, and that prevents the water from going back into the city. So just wanted to let you know that. And then the reason for the quick add is there's a six-week lead time, and so the, the alley is currently closed off because it's structurally unsafe for a vehicle to go over, so we kind of want to get this moving as fast as we can.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. It does sound needed.
Commissioner Githens?
I want to thank Mr. Kreider, he's doing this even when he's sick. So he's a very, very dedicated employee.
All right, any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U-Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract with HFI for the vault lid replacement, signify, thank you, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Ah, my short-term memory, I must be tired. All right, so we do have an appointment.
Yes, I wish to nominate Max Smith to the opioid settlement allocation committee. Max is a local individual who is in recovery, and he's a great guy. I look forward to working with him on this.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Thank you in advance for your service. And all those in favor of approving the appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Okay, so, so yesterday, we were at the Capitol Improvement Board meeting. Appreciated getting an update on where things are, although it's, it's, I tend to watch those meetings because I'm usually not around to go to them, but, but it's really great to see the hard work of the CIB, and we, we do thank them for their work and getting things moving as quickly as they are. So early voting begins October 8th. You can still register to vote in person by 4:00 p.m. October 7th, or if you're online, October 7th, 11:59 p.m. The clerk is processing mail-in ballots, so if you need a mail-in ballot, please contact that office. But early voting begins Tuesday, October 8th, and we will get the schedule up before our meetings, so that folks know this is a consequential election, as everyone is, but this seems even more so than ever. So we do encourage people to make sure you register to vote, and if you need to register, do so very, very quickly. We do have virtual office hours via Teams six times a month. Join us by going to the calendar and seeing the list of dates and times. You can speak to one of us individually, not recorded, and have a conversation about your suggestions, ideas, concerns, and we're always very happy to, to hear from folks. The next blood drive will be at Ivy Tech Shreve Hall, Wednesday, October 16th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Thursday, October 17th, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. For an appointment, please go to redcross.org. We do encourage folks to go to co.munro.in.us, where you can find the calendar to attend office hours, but also you can sign up for emergency alerts. Click on the megaphone, follow the instructions, and you will be in the loop. On October 14th, 5:30 to 7:30, at the Ferguson Crestmont Boys and Girls Club, we're going to be having a community conversation on health, and there is both a panel discussion and facilitated small group discussions. We will have officials there from IU, Bloomington Health, Health Net, and from Monroe County Health Department. This is at 1111 West 12th, and dinner will be provided by United Way, so kudos to them for doing that. We really appreciate that. So that's October 14th, 5:30 to 7:30. There is a, we do ask folks to reserve a spot in advance. So is there anything else for the good of the order? Oh, yeah. Gosh, that's, yeah, you would have thought that I would have remembered that. I think it's on my notes at home. Yeah, Sunday at 3:00 p.m., we're going to have a meeting at Detmer Park at the shelter for residents who live in the area of Vernal Pike to hear their concerns and to talk to them about plans if that site is selected for the justice complex construction. So Detmer Park, 3:00 p.m. in the shelter, and we look forward to seeing everyone there. We're putting out signs today, so we look forward to seeing folks then. Thank you for reminding me.
I've got two things I'd like to bring up if I could. I really miss the fact that Jim Sherman doesn't come to, to talk with us anymore, and he would always come and talk about the CASA volunteers and how they're needed, so I want to let folks know that that need still exists. And the next training will be starting January 21st. These will be on Tuesday, Thursday evenings, and it'll run for approximately a month. If you're interested at all, please go to monroecountycasa.org, read about it, and go through their application process. And then also, our Monroe County Cares Board is putting on a program called Medication-Assisted Treatment Matters, Stigma Barriers and More. This will be a panel discussion. It'll occur here in the Nat U-Hill room on Thursday, October the 10th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And this is, this is just another step in helping people who are in recovery.
All right, excellent. We do not have a work session today, so our next meeting is Wednesday, October 9th, 10 a.m., right here in Nat U-Hill. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day. We're adjourned.